Okay, welcome, everyone. Board is getting back together for our study session on ethnic studies. And Superintendent Tully, would you like to kick it off?
Well, thank you very much. I want to, of course, introduce Melissa Riley, Assistant Superintendent for the North Region, and Ava Thomas, Director of Racial Educational Justice. They're here prepared to talk about our recent, I'm sorry, ethnic studies pilot and the work that went into, over the last few years, putting in the work, to plan that work and move it forward, and give you an update of where we are now and where we're headed. So I'm just going to turn it over to Melissa to move forward on this.
Hi, thank you for having us and giving us the opportunity to work with you tonight. We want to first start off with our land acknowledgement.
Yes, and since we have initiated this process, we have updated our language to a land and peoples' acknowledgement, so that we can not only acknowledge the land that we're on and the people who came before us, but the cohesion between that element. Also want to recognize that it's Indigenous Peoples' Day today on October 10th. So we have this land acknowledgement. I'll read it out loud, and then we'll move forward from there. We acknowledge that the North Shore School District functions on Coast Salish lands in the areas that have been colonized, occupied, and renamed to Bothell, Kenmore, Redmond, and Woodinville. We acknowledge the experiences of genocide, forest relocation, ethnic cleansing, and land theft of indigenous peoples and sacred lands, so we can build our awareness of how settler colonization still exists today. We honor the ways of knowing and ways of being of indigenous peoples and tribal nations who are still here and thriving in our district community. We resolve to learn from these realities and partner with local indigenous peoples and tribal leaders to work toward a justice-driven educational experience for each student, family, community member, and educator in North Shore. We also acknowledge that this is a working land acknowledgement that will continue to evolve as our partnership with local indigenous peoples and tribal leaders expands. So our partnerships have expanded, and so that leads us to the next slide, which brings us an elementary-adapted land acknowledgement. We connected with some of our principals, building leaders of elementary schools, and then with Mary Wilbur, who's our Native American Education Coordinator, and together we came up with an elementary-adapted version, because the first one is very critical and important, and it has a lot of large terminology and vocabulary words. We wanted to not take away from the sentiment of the land acknowledgement, but also add language and shift that language so that elementary students could understand it. So I will read this now, too. My classroom and my school are in the North Shore School District, which is on Coast Salish lands. Indigenous peoples and their lands have gone through hurtful things in the past, and some of those things still go on today. We respect indigenous peoples and tribal nations who are still here and living in our community. We will work with local indigenous peoples and tribal leaders to keep learning how to make a difference in our community and in our school. And that is now posted on the Racial Educational Justice website, so wanted to thank Mary Wilbur. Also wanted to tie in, this is important, and it connects to ethnic studies, because indigeneity is one of the elements of ethnic studies, and part of that is recognizing where we are, where we are in this boardroom, where our students are in classrooms, where educators are when they're teaching, where we're at in our community, and just being sure to honor the lands and the people who have lived on them since time immemorial and are still here today and do have futures moving forward.
Thank you, everyone. So we wanted to spend some time with you this evening answering the following questions. We want you to understand when we say "we," who we're talking about. We have a few little bite-sized lessons around ethnic studies that we'd like to work with you on today. And then we've been engaged in this work, as Michael totally said, for a few years, more intensely last year and the year before, and so we want to share where we've been, where we are now, and where we're going, and then engage you in an activity around what our students are saying, who are currently in those high school courses, and you'll have an opportunity to hear from one of our students, and then we want to hear what you're thinking.
So first, we're going to start with, who are we?
Yes. So as Ava mentioned as well, we recognize ourselves in time and in space with the people who surround us, the people who are this community, and where our district currently resides. And as such, over the last two years, we have been engaged on both our core design team, which we've highlighted in the past, and our collaborative learning teams, teachers and administrators, absolutely, but also our students and our families and community members who've been part of this work and giving input along the way. We feel like we've been in this iterative process of learning and growing together with them, and as we have worked on one team and made progress, we've shared with another team, and then there's been a reciprocity between the learning and the work across teams to create what we have in draft form right now that is going to be supporting and is currently supporting our pilots.
We also thought that it would be important to talk about the representation on the team. There is quite a bit of diversity among intersectional lines. So we have diversity based on race, ethnic backgrounds, age, ability, LGBTQIA, 2S+ individuals, and then lived experiences and perspectives. We value this and think it's critical in the design of it, because representation is important, diversity and intersectionality are important, and if they're important in our ethnic studies courses and in our classes, then they need to be important in the design process as well. And so that's why we thought it was really important to situate that and to really talk through how we could have diverse representation on the team, not only to bring in perspectives, but also the various community-based knowledges that we have among our students and community members, too. So just wanted to touch on that.
Absolutely. I think it's a really good example of who we've been working with, not just who we've been working for.
So before we move beyond that, we want to talk about what is ethnic studies and address that. So this comes from OSPI, and we thought that it was important to include, because we wanted to make it clear that we're in alignment with the state on the ethnic studies development. So ethnic studies is an interdisciplinary, multidisciplinary, and comparative study of the social, cultural, political, and economic expression and experiences of ethnic groups. And beyond that, you'll see the wheel to your right. So community-responsive pedagogy is also, is about centering community knowledges and honoring the brilliance that comes out of our communities, and being responsive to that, not only in the design process, but in the classrooms as well. Critical pedagogy is about not having students in the classroom facing forward at their individual desks and engaged in this memorization process, where the teacher is the sole bearer of knowledge in the room and is just teaching the students how to memorize. Instead, it's this shift in pedagogy, where students are given tools to be able to think critically and engage in critical dialogue with one another, and also to be experts in the room. So it's not just the students learning from the teacher, but it's the teacher learning from the students, and the students learning from each other. So it's this shift in pedagogical practice, and we'll talk later about how ethnic studies can be a standalone course, which is our high school rollout, but also the lens through which educators and students can look through within their classrooms, regardless of grade level or subject area. And then that last component up there is culturally responsive and sustaining pedagogy, which is being responsive to the diverse identities that are represented in classrooms. So the teacher has the opportunity to share about themselves, and then the students have the opportunity to do that identity work and positive identity development in the classrooms. So then that's the opportunity to build windows and mirrors with each other, so that they not only get to learn about themselves, but they get to learn about their peers in the class as well. And then our goal of ethnic studies is to center the voices of students and families with specificity to centering that of marginalized communities. That doesn't mean that we're swapping out who's oppressed, and that doesn't mean silencing various communities. It means that over time and over history, there have been various communities whose knowledges have not been included, and they've been excluded. So this is an opportunity to bring those voices from the margin to the center of this work, so that every student feels like their voice is valued and affirmed in the classroom. Our next goal is about staff and providing professional development and resources to staff. So we want to make sure that we're equipping staff with the right tools and the resources to support them on this journey, and that also aligns with Board Policy 0001, which is our equity policy. And then the last component is to advance racial and educational justice. We have talked about this as a moral imperative of the work, but also as a critical need and a movement in education, to really shift the pedagogy and shift teaching and learning so that it is justice and student-centered.
So before we move on, oh, yeah.
All right, I just, thank you. Sorry for interrupting, but Ava, you mentioned the Board Policy 001. It is a number of years old. Does our team feel like it's still relevant and a working model policy, or is that something we should start talking about? Does it need to be refreshed, updated?
So it is titled "The Equity and Diversity Policy," and we've since updated our department to the Racial and Educational Justice Department. We've done some backend work on looking at ways that we could refresh the policy, so we'd love to continue that conversation.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just inviting that.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Say to us, it's need to update, or here's some ways that we think that should happen.
Absolutely. And I was going to lean in and say, before we move on, do you have any questions? So thank you for, thank you for jumping in. Are there any other questions before we continue?
And I have a horrible habit of asking questions that have already been thought of and are subsequent, so please let me know if I just need to be patient. So, but I'm really curious, you know, in terms of the goal of this work, you know, and if we could expand, you know, you know, in terms of student outcomes, that I know some other districts and regions have done some ethnic studies work already, and it would be lovely to understand what student outcomes and benefits they've seen a few years farther down the road than where we are. I'm kind of curious about student benefits, both from the belonging perspective, as well as how that supports student growth in general.
Yes, so there's a lot of research out there that supports this ethnic studies work, more and more research that's leaning into earlier grades. Christine Sleeter is one of the researchers whose materials we use and texts that we followed, that talk about the benefits of having ethnic studies courses in schools in various communities, where students have had the opportunity to, in some cases, see themselves represented in the material and what they're learning in a way that they haven't been before, and have benefited from a type of learning and pedagogy that is more like their own home life and their culture, where their ways of knowing and being are acknowledged, and that they are able to show up in those classroom spaces and lead their learning. I'm thinking of, I'm trying to think of one of the most recent studies that I read from San Francisco. I believe it was, I want to say 2019, 2020, where there's marked improvement in graduation rates, particularly for students who've been marginalized, and having the opportunity to be centered in the work has become really essential. And it highlights, it's not just about the content and what students are getting to learn about or talk about, but that it's their leading their learning. It's not just the didactic interactions or the teacher anointing knowledge onto students and thus you will learn, but the criticality that Ava mentioned, the ability to deepen your level of consciousness and your understanding about the world around you, your community and yourself, has drawn students to come back time and time again to participate. And so that's one of the initial studies that I remember reading, as well as how, as well as the emphasis on disrupting some of the dominant narratives that students often see in a packaged text or curriculum, and having the opportunity to explore true narratives and narratives that counter what they've traditionally learned. And there's a high degree of responsiveness to how it shapes the way teachers teach, once they engage in ethnic studies pedagogy.
So that's really interesting, too, and I guess that's probably going to be learning as we go forward, how teachers teach, you know, becoming more culturally responsive, you know? It's kind of a maturation of the system, in a way, so really curious about that going on.
And just really quick, too, what we're doing is establishing a feedback loop with the students who are in our pilot ethnic studies high school course, so that they can be reflective of their experiences and their learning, and also how they're feeling in the classes. And we'll, we have some qualitative data to share with you a little bit later, where you can look at that, and I think that that goes into student outcomes as well, because we'd like to align and think about the correlation between student feelings and positive perceptions, identity development, engagement, grades, graduation rates, with how the teachers are approaching the class and their pedagogy.
So while we haven't had a chance, I want to give an opportunity for CJ to invite him to the table, since we're talking about what students are experiencing, and so I just didn't want him to be off to the side, because that's counter to the whole purpose of centering students in the work. And so he was very committed to being at practice, and now he's here to join us, and we'll invite him, and of course, as we see fit, and there'll be an opportunity later, but just wanted to, do you want to introduce yourself at all?
Hello, I'm CJ Raquale, senior at Inglemore High School.
Thank you.
Welcome, CJ, and thank you for joining us.
Thank you for being here. So the elephant in the room, the narrative is ethnic studies is part of a zero-sum game. So if we help some students, then other students will be harmed. I don't agree. But in these studies, is there evidence that all students benefit from this work? Or perhaps, you know, one group's graduation rates go up, it doesn't mean another group's then necessarily go down?
So without being able to quote anything specifically, I haven't read, I mean, we've done a lot of reading and a lot of learning, and we haven't read anything that states that students who aren't being centered in a particular lesson or unit, that there's harm that is done academically and/or otherwise. I think a lot of it has to do with the pedagogy, a lot of it has to do with, like Ava had mentioned, too, where you are, you know, in your learning and identity development. And there's a lot that we have read and even used in our court, in our sessions, that specifically talk about the benefit for particular groups. And in particular, if we talk about white students, that's one of the elephants in the room, I think you're trying to address without addressing, and we can just put that out there. I think that's just one example, where it's explicitly articulated how all students benefit from engaging in the type of learning that takes shape in ethnic studies classrooms, and when teachers engage in ethnic studies pedagogy, regardless of the classroom, the discipline. Ava, did you want to add?
Yeah, just briefly, we have some data to show a little bit later, but I just wanted to tie that in just briefly, because I think it's important to highlight. We talked about our current enrollment based on demographics, and then thought about that in relation to our current student body enrollment, too. So you can see there, so for example, for our white students, there's 45.6% enrolled in the class. Well, we have 48.7% white students in North Shore. So you can see, we looked at this, and it quite, yeah, quite aligns nicely with our school, our district-wide data. And you'll see here, too, in the index cards that students are writing, you can tell sometimes when a student identifies as white, they'll share that they don't feel bad about their whiteness, but they have had the opportunity in the class to be reflective of the privilege or the systemic and institutional power that that affords them, and then explore what they can and should do about that. So it's not about making any student feel bad for their identities, it's about getting them to be reflective of them, and for any student in the classroom to be reflective of this collective effort to build mutual lines of solidarity with each other, and to take that personal accountability for, this is all of our work. At this table, this is all of our work. In this classroom, this is all of our work. What are our own personal contributions to the work and holding each other and ourselves accountable?
Just also had another, and I just pulled out of there, that was really intriguing, and that is, we talk about wanting schools or students to feel connected to their community, and that they belong, and that they're part of their community, but yet it's difficult to maybe bring your authentic self to all social interactions, because society sometimes, you know, unrewards, you know, that type of authenticity. And so I thought it was exciting to see that the pilot's going to have the teachers kind of opening up about their authentic selves to the extent that they're willing to share. And hopefully, students will kind of take that cue and feel comfortable to say, hey, this is my authentic self. And I think we'll find so many more intersectionalities than we realize, because I think people really are guarded in society. And what a better way to feel like you belong, if you can just be yourself at school. So I'm excited to see how that translates.
Let me scoot back, little early preview here. That's, I'm feeling that you're enthused about learning, and I think that that's a great entry point and perspective to hold. So one of the ways that this work first got started was, we've had students and families saying for time and time again that they want to be engaged in their learning differently, maybe in some ways than they had been traditionally the past represented. They want to create that culture of belonging for each and every student, theirs and others. And we have many, many teachers who support that as well. And so back in 2019, a small group of teachers came together with Ava and worked with her and Dr. Wayne Al and Jesse Hagopian, and worked in a small group and began to unpack this idea around ethnic studies and what that could mean in support of our board policies and the trajectory that we are moving to, and being responsive to students and develop culturally sustaining spaces. And they did begin some of this work that Ava will attest to was very powerful initially, even though it was short-lived. It didn't die, it didn't go away, it just took a pause, like many of us did in 2020 with COVID. But it's also important to point out that also in 1920, Senate Bill 5023 was put in place, and the Office of the Superintendent of Public Instruction articulated within that bill that they must also identify and make available ethnic studies materials and resources for use in grade seven through 12. And the legislature at the time articulated that they encourage public schools with students in grade seven through 12 to offer ethnic studies courses that incorporated the materials and resources. And I believe it was at that time that some of our high schools began thinking about what could it be like to have a lab class or an elective that's, you know, similar to how other electives come to be. And then in addition to that, Senate Bill 6066 was then added to enforce the importance of making ethnic studies materials and resources available for use in kindergarten through 12th grade, not just seven through 12. And the materials and the resources needed to be designed to prepare students to be global citizens in a global society, right, with appreciation for the contributions of multiple cultures. And I think that speaks to what we're talking about here, too, when we look at the graph, right? We are preparing our students for the future, and in many, many ways, ethnic studies is a lot of things, but it's also our work in Goal One, in Goal Two, in Goal Three, in Goal Four, and in Goal Five. And so in North Shore, we engaged in that work in parallel with the state, wanting to make sure we kept the momentum going and provide access, but we also felt it was important to include preschool, because we have many, many preschool, you know, families who represent our global majority as well, and they are our students here in the district. And that's what began the desire to have a P-12 framework rather than a K-12. So we launched that work in 2020, 21. We were remote, and we were committed, and there was a lot of interest, and that prompted the design of two teams. And then in 2021, 22, when we were able to be in person and really trying to dig into completing something that felt that it was North Shore's work and coming from our community, that was matched with and supported by the OSPI ethnic studies framework, which also came along with open educational resources. And we thought it was a powerful opportunity to continue our work, to see where we aligned, and you can see in the domains and the themes that that is the case. And even more powerful is that the work is being done here in North Shore by our community. And it also will provide a way for people to navigate this host of educational resources that have been provided. And last year as well, the State Board of Education adopted a resolution of intent to establish ethnic studies as a graduation requirement, and so our work continued to complete the P-12 framework draft and the draft of the curricular units for the high school course.
So where are we now? In 2022, 23, we are developing the P-12 ethnic studies framework and continuing to do that and run the pilot this academic year, and then go to CMAC again for approval or recommendation this coming spring. Also want to note that within our framework pilot... Also want to note that within our framework pilot, which will be starting next week, we have currently 22 teachers signed up so far across grade bands for that. So we're very excited about that. Then moving into the curricular units in the high school ethnic studies course, it's a semester-long course, so we're running it first and then second semester. And it's going to be, or it is at the four comprehensive high schools. And we do have six high school teachers total across the four high schools who are running that pilot. And they're also part of a monthly professional learning community, so a PLC, and on our ethnic studies work team too, so we can be talking with them, supporting them and providing them with resources to continue to build out this work. Transitioning to the ethnic studies framework. This framework is meant to be, like Melissa shared, preschool through 12th grade. And it's divided up by grade band. So we have preschool through second grade, third through fifth, sixth through eighth, and then ninth through 12th, so that we can make the language accessible to students and to the teachers who are teaching that. It's also designed to be the lens that teachers are looking through. So it should be applicable to every single grade level, but also every content area as well. And then in the preschools and elementary schools too. This will be a year-round process, so teachers can be thinking about how to integrate that and weave that into their already existing curricula. And it's not a curriculum, but there are key points, questions, areas that they could be teaching into and thinking about overlaying their current curriculum. So it's not like a curriculum approval process. It's a framework that teachers can look through. And then there's also going to be professional development provided for the teachers who are piloting so that they're getting the ongoing learning about how to take this off the page.
And we will share a couple of examples, but I wanted to take time to highlight the different components in each of the drafts that have been created. So the framework components, there was a lot of conversation with Dr. Reed about this and this concept of backwards design. And so for those of us who were teachers, you know, we were taught to teach with, you know, with the end in mind when you think about backwards design and those concepts. And I think what's transpired here is we've kept some of those, the framing and those structures that teachers can hook onto and move from the known to the new. But rather than having them think about, you know, teaching with the end in mind, we want them to teach with the future of our students in mind. And so it extends well beyond whatever we teach is intended to extend well beyond just what they need to learn, like within that particular grade level. And so that's one way to think about it. So within our framework, there are themes that are the central overarching and big ideas. They also, the state refers to these as domains, which are very similar to what we've developed, as I've mentioned. We've also crafted over the last two years enduring understandings that are preschool through 12th grade, that are key learning statements that we, our team, our community, that are statements that summarize the important ideas that are central to each of the topics and then are intended to have a lasting value beyond the classroom. And then essential questions really point to the important transferable ideas that are worth understanding and really can serve as doorways or lenses for which learners can then step into, see, and explore key concepts, themes, theories, issues, and problems that are really important to them that are not necessarily directed by us as they learn over time to lead their learning. And then there's other components that are supportive as well. And we included planning considerations as teachers and students and families learned within the framework, there was things that they thought were important to make sure we capture as we were learning. And so we tried to track those along the way, knowing that there's going to be more. And then we want teachers to feel like they can see readily some of the correlating standards that might support their work within the framework, much like the state did with social studies. But we'll show that there's definitely more than that you can do within other content areas and with other curriculum.
So I wanted to talk about the themes a little bit within the framework. These are still in draft form, so we don't feel comfortable sharing out the full framework yet, but wanted to give you an idea of the purpose and kind of the overarching perspective and elements of them. So from left to right, we have identity. That gets students to think about what are identities, what types of identities are there? And then opportunities for them to reflect on their own identities and learn about that of their peers in their classroom. Power and oppression has to do with what are social structures and what does that mean? What do they look like? How did they take shape? And also, how can we disrupt them and create new forms or new systems of power? History of resistance and liberation looks at histories over time and how communities have resisted some really tough things, items, experiences over time, how those histories impact us today, and then how communities have resisted over time, but also how they're imagining or dreaming up or envisioning more just futures moving forward. And then the last one is healing and futurity. So looking at what types of healing need to happen, what healing can happen individually, and then what healing can happen within communities and within societies or even globally. And again, back to what can a collective justice-driven future look like? So also wanted to note too that this has to do with learning and student learning, but it also pushes students to move beyond that and go to action too. So students have the opportunity to grapple with their own personal roles at this moment in time and what they can do independently, but also, for example, as a class or as a school, what are ideas that they can dream up to, to really start to mobilize or actionize ideas that are sparked in their minds from that learning?
We know we're giving you a lot to chew on.
Okay, I just, I have to say, CJ, just so you know, Director Thomas, Assistant Superintendent Riley, and Superintendent Tolly are some of the smartest and most talented people we have. And we two are intimidated and are hanging on to try to follow what they're saying.
Just wait till his turn.
I am looking forward to.
Thank you. So what we thought we would do before, you know, is just give you a sample of what it could look like, right, to think of a framework. And so as an educator, former teacher, I think about connections that I would make if I were to take on the framework. And so not only are there the connections to backwards design and unit planning that we've talked about, but there's also, if you're thinking about these and let's say for, if you're wanting to integrate learning around identity and identity development across your content, across the grade levels, this is an example of what the enduring understandings might be that we would lean into and teach into and dialogue about and act on from preschool all the way through 12th grade. And so what that then might look like, because this is something that has come up in our group, well, what will it look like for preschooler, right? And so we tried to give some examples. So there's an essential question that lives, you know, across the framework, which is who am I? And whether you're in preschool or you're in 12th grade, you might still be wondering that. Or whether you're in 25th or 30th grade, you might be also still working on developing, right, who you are and to normalize that is okay and part of our journey in life. And to give students an opportunity to learn and grow in that way, we think is an essential question across the grades. Whereas then talking within those grade bands, thinking about and having students explore what identity is and then who they are and who they are with their family. There's some phrasing in ethnic studies that's who am I and who am I with you? And it's this very communal component of the relationship and the sense of belonging and the compassion that's developed that can happen from a very, very early age when we give students the opportunity, right? And that's one of the things in our Student Voice data analysis that we did and the collection of data a couple of years ago with students. One of the things that was at the top of the list was we need to start teaching students early and have these conversations early. And so you can see, you know, the trajectory across the essential questions, what that could look like by the time a student is in 12th grade. And a student in 12th grade now thinking about how does ethnic studies relate to my identity within the course is going to be different than students 12 years from now who have had the opportunity to engage in this work for 12 years. The learning targets at the bottom, what's highlighted that's different? You can see heritage, custom, values. And hopefully, what you can see is a foundation that we've already been developing here in North Shore. Even if you look at the social studies curriculum for second graders or, you know, science units and things that kids get to learn, you will see elements of this already there. And this then supports teachers with how to be more intentional. So there's maybe a heavy emphasis on family culture in the early grades. And then they begin to think beyond in terms of their region and the regional culture and how it's shaped by those of us who exist here and have and will. And then American culture and then global impacts, which again coincides with a lot of what students are learning in school. And so we wanted to show an example of the trajectory of how the learning can build year after year after year and over multiple years. And then we also wanted to share, and oh, that was the other thing I was going to mention is when you think about integration, there, you could pick a content area and/or, for example, music, drama art. There's no one place where you can't engage in that work across content. And so it led us to this idea, which we're not going to claim that it's the most expert design. However, when Ava and I have thought about this and we've worked with others, you know, we've really thought about, well, you know, what then is the result of this application of this framework? So if we were to focus on concepts of healing, we thought about this idea of a quilt and how it's a piece of everyone and everything kind of coming together and being woven and becoming the fabric within our community. So whether it's the classroom environment, whether you're a teacher of art or music or reading, writing, math, science, social studies, or some of those elementary teachers who get to teach it all, that there are places where woven within the content and pervasive across your environment, taking these enduring understandings can create really sound foundational connections for students, places and spaces of healing that are normalized, right? As opposed to these certain elements of discomfort or having discomfort and knowing what to do with it. And so we gave some examples of what that could mean if we were to think about and focus on those pieces. I saw your signal, so I'm going to pause.
Yeah, so I'll just share my family story. So my older children shared some aspects of their heritage and culture in elementary school. And then in middle school, that came back to harm them. And they were bullied because of who they were and that sharing. And so my younger child just said, not sharing that. I've watched and learned, and so I'm not letting anyone know that's who we are. How are we going about training both staff and students so that students feel safe to share that? Because they learn pretty quickly. This is not an accepted culture. This is not an accepted heritage or custom in our community. I'm seeing it on the news as being attacked in laws and speeches. So how do we make sure that students do feel safe when they share that? It won't be later used against them?
So I think I can start a little bit and then Melissa might have some notes. So I think part of it is not having the experience of students being able to share their identities or about themselves, be the exception to the rule. We want to shift the teaching and learning in North Shore so that it is the rule. It is the foundation so that it becomes more normalized and so that kids are having those conversations more in depth and more often from a young age, but also in their preschool through 12th grade trajectory. I also know part of it, at the bottom is the restorative justice element. So, you know, when we talk about like bullying and bullying prevention, where's the identity overlay to that? And if there's harm caused in a community, where's the repair that needs to happen? So those are conversations. And then I know within the courses, the teachers are doing a really good job setting the stage and talking through like community agreements, what happens if an agreement is broken? How do we repair harm that's done? And what does it look like to look out for our community in this classroom?
Ava, do you remember the name of that reading?
Which one?
Around the community guidelines? We could share the resource. We use that as one of the foundational pieces and engaged in community agreements, community guidelines within our work team over this last year because as the work became more intense and there was different levels of involvement, there were times where people didn't feel heard or felt harmed. And we had to think about how we worked with that within our own group. And so that was embedded into particularly the high school course. And as Ava mentioned, but one of the things that's really poignant about this work is that ethnic studies itself is not just a course, it's not just a pedagogy, it's a movement, right, to help shape and change the way that we are with each other, right? To a more just and a future. And we're reminded in this work that social justice isn't an event. This isn't an event. This is a process. This is a pathway now and into the future. It's a process. And so you have to continuously iterate in those processes. And so I think it's a combination of trusting in the students to develop those community agreements, which I don't know if you could speak to if you want to, and developing the tools to then know what to do when something's not quite right in teaching, giving them the opportunity to speak up and share in ways that maybe they've had and held but haven't had the forum to do. And not only just looking to the teachers, but I also think teachers have had the opportunity to do a lot of self-work over the last few years. And as we move towards actionable practice, it's going to be a continued growth. And I, this may, what I want to say is that a lot of this work may not always be comfortable. And we have to constantly be in conversation with each other and be able to sit at the same table, whether we agree or not, to think about ways in which we can create and collaborate and co-construct that the type of safety net that we need to trust our teachers to do this work with students and trust our students to lead their learning and also to work on repair. And I think that we also have to remember that with any new learning that there's going to be mistakes. There's just a different degree of pressure that may be applied here, whereas the lens on a teacher teaching algebra for the first time and making a mistake may not have the same scrutiny or intense focus on it. And I think that's going to be important for us all to remember in this work because it is about teaching and learning and it is about our students and just futures. Did you, I saw you nodding. I felt the desire to share and so enough of, do you want to say?
Yeah, I was kind of thinking back to what you said, Ms. Hayes, about like your like son going through like something because he shared something from his past, like how he grew up in his community. And I feel like that's why it's kind of important for us to like go through ethnic studies as we're growing up, because then like we have a community with the people we're growing up with. And they know like where we come from, we will know where they come from. That's not really like. That's not really like a scrutiny either way, like we're not feeling any type of weight towards each other. And we grow up together and we'll, we'll always know like a community, we get to feel safe with each other and get to share like our values and like in class so far, like we've talked about like who we are as people, like our communities, like our like heritage and like, it's like made me feel like more welcome. And I feel like if I had that growing up, like as a child, it would have helped me grow as a person more, like made me feel like more accepted, more accepted in the community that I'm in. Because like I've grown up like kind of feeling like I didn't belong in like a like predominantly white school, like I felt like kind of like an outsider. And I feel like if we had ethnic studies from a time where like I didn't know much about like what's, what's surrounding me, it would have helped me like grow with people who I was always around and it wouldn't, it would have made me feel like more accepted and made other people like me feel more accepted. So I feel like it's like kind of a necessity for kids growing up who don't feel comfortable.
There's a lot of kids that grow up, don't feel comfortable and accepted. And that's the point, right? Is we all have to kind of understand that we walk this path together.
Sure.
And just one last thing and then I promise we'll let you go on. But you know, what occurs to me too is, is something we've talked about in many aspects of bullying that originates, can originate from a lot of sources, something that can be helpful is also teaching our students when they're the bystander, you know, equipping them with tools and resources and forethought and how to intercede when something happens. And so that's my hope for this program as well, that we'll also have a bunch of peers, like you said, right? Like you have people who understand you now and so then heaven forbid something happened, then the, the, our, the rest of our community will be equipped to step in quickly.
Thank you. So we just have a little bit more before we, before we engage in the student activity. And so we, I think we've talked quite a bit about the high school course already, we just definitely wanted to make sure we covered all the bases and, and just highlighting again that the piloting of these curricular units and these ethnic studies elective courses have some contemporary components, but have some transformative approaches embedded to curriculum design. And, and it's important to note that rather than there being this ethnic studies textbook that's, that you go lockstep through, you know, daily lessons, day one, objective one, do this, that it, it really prompts inquiry. And, and that inquiry is really influenced by students, by community, by the context. And, and then it's tied to social action as, as Ava had, had, had mentioned. And so what we've developed has, offers course guidance, certainly like the traditional scope and sequence, but then the pedagogical decision-making is, is, is based on all those other components that I highlighted. And so there's a host of resources that we're trying to develop, not just for teachers to use, but for students to have access to as well to lead their learning. And so again, these are, this is just highlighting kind of the, some of the traditional components. And what, what the group who worked on these units thought was really important was that we pulled in the, the essential questions and the guiding questions that also came from, come from the frameworks are then pulled also into these courses. And so there's, there's that connection there once, once students in essence arrive into an ethnic studies class. And so there's key topics that are related to the goals and the learning targets, but then the connected content is a whole bunch of different ideas about how you might approach it with resources to think about. So, and then finally, the assessment suggestions. It's just an example of how this work supports universal design for, for learning as well. There's a lot of inclusive practices embedded, not just culturally sustaining or responsive. And so, for example, we, we wanted to be really responsive to the ways in which students wanted to represent their thinking, to apply their learning and to, to demonstrate their growth over time. So rather than say, "You will give this quiz at the end of this section about your identity", we, we, for example, we, we, we offer in, in, in this learning, a bunch of different options that teachers can think about and offer to students and then help them ultimately by the end, design their, their own learning. And so right now, we have seven and we're calling them mini-units. That's to honor my teacher friends who feel that they would like it to last for all of high school if they could, but there's, there's seven mini-units that have central ideas, relevant content, and inquiry and choice are, are built in with intention. But the, the gradual release of inquiry, knowing that some students may not have had a lot of opportunities to lead their learning increases with each unit. And so they're built on each other like that. And then, and then in our next generation science standards, if, I'm sure you have them memorized and you're familiar, that there's cross-cutting concepts that, that are talked about in the next generation science standards, similar to math practices that can be used across, right, all of the units. And so we, we, we highlight cross-cutting concepts that we think are really important. So for example, if you're going to talk about the social constructs of race, some of that could become heavy, right? And so we, we talk about the importance of joy and brilliance and, and communities thriving time and time and time again and, and think that it's important for that to be embedded within the, the learning. And that is one way in which it's, we've evolved these units. And then the last quote unquote unit or the end of the, the course is really culminating project that's designed by, by the students based on something that they want, want to take up. And so that's an example of those pieces. Ava highlighted this slide, do you want to say anything else about it?
Unless there's questions.
Unless there's questions, I'm going to pause.
So this data shows the enrollment for the second semester pilot course in the high school. And wanted to note that there are more students enrolled in the second semester course. So I think that's a good thing.
Yes.
Students are talking very positively about their experiences so far and we'll hear about those coming up. Also wanted to share the current enrollment in the high school pilot class, first and second semester. And this is based on grade level in the high school. Also want to note too, during our student justice conference, ethnic studies was talked about. And there were students there that expressed quite a bit of interest in ethnic studies and wanting to continue those types of conversations beyond that day. And so while we will have the student justice conference on an annual basis, we're kind of tying this work back into those broader themes. And it generated an uptick in students signing up for ethnic studies courses based on their experience at the student justice conference.
So I wanted to take a minute to, to just capture, highlight for you where we are going as of right now. We, we are committed to continuing high school ethnic studies courses. We, we recognize that, that, that a semester-long, you know, matters because there's a lot of other courses that are important and room, right, room for students to grow in different ways, but we, but we at least want to make sure that there's a semester-long course. We would love to see the opportunity in all of the high schools. If you were to take an opportunity to go back and watch one of Dr. Reed's news, news, Thursday news sessions last year with students who, who were, who are on the work team and were engaged in this work, they, there's, there's a couple, there's students there who don't, who've been working on this for two years who don't have it at their school yet, right? And so I think about those, those kids. And I also think about our, this, this, the students who, who would love to see an, an enrollment increase and increase the, the sections that then can be had so that they're not having to choose between this one course that they really have to have, right, to graduate or to, you know, follow a particular pathway and then they have to choose that over ethnic studies right now. We'd love to see the curricular units approved so that there is some consistency in the way in which we can work and grow the teachers that are teaching now, but teachers who in the, of the future, to, to have a, a guide because it really is masterful work that we're asking them to do and be very malleable. And then with our framework, we'd love to see it approved for, for use as well as have the opportunity to design an implementation plan because we're very aware that when we think about P-12, that's a lot of people. So we, we, we want to make sure that we, we, we continue and, and are able to move into an implementation phase and can continue to work with our students, our families, our educators and administrators who are, who want this to be done with great intention.
Yep, sorry, I wanted to make sure you finished your sentence there.
Yeah, got it.
So, um, some of the questions I'm asking are, I'm trying to be proactive.
Yes.
In terms of the pushback we may see and making sure that we have answers and responses. So one of the narratives is around math and science instruction. Could you just describe what a lesson would look like at elementary math or an elementary science class that incorporates this work? Because again, the narrative is it's not actually teaching math, it's...
So, oh, just a couple examples. So I, this is kind of answering the, the question in part. So students, some examples I've seen, for example, in a high school AP statistics course is around redlining. So let's say you do some statistical analysis, not just an understanding of what redlining is, but you engage in, in heavily in the themes of power and oppression and then thinking about resistance and, and healing. And then what has, what has redlining done within our communities here locally and then what could that mean? And, and when kids look out the window in the car and they see what's around them in their community, how did those places come to be? Now you translate that back down into elementary and now you're thinking about what's in our community, what's here in this community that's maybe not in, in, in another community. So let's say students notice that there aren't any, there aren't any Trader Joe's in certain communities or there's more, you know, convenience stores on certain corners or other types of, of, of stores. And they're having conversations about healthy food and healthy eating and, and access, right? And what does it mean to be, be, be food vulnerable or unstable? And what is a food desert? And what do we know about a desert and what does that mean? And so what would it mean to then enrich our community with these resources? What could we do to advocate? How could we partner with our local community organizations, our, our, and to, to bring to our community or to bring to communities that we care about that may not be where we currently live to then support what they need? And I think that example, if we were to have a chance to delve into it, would be a great example of integration because it's math, it's science, it's reading, it's writing, it's history, right? It's, it's more, it's listening, it's speaking, right? It's collaboration, it's all those, all those key components could be embedded in understanding those pieces without, at the high school AP level, having, not that, not that a third grader could learn about redlining, but that, right? There's like different ways that the trajectory of learning could flow and the depth and intent that could be behind also helping students learn about some of their key, key components. And add another example.
Yeah, just another quick example to, to tie back to the identity piece, like thinking about story problems in elementary school. So it's not just Johnny had six apples, like who's Johnny and why are we talking about apples, but making it relevant to the students. So what do we know about Alyssa in this class? Oh, we know that she likes to collect marbles. So Alyssa had six marbles. And so just really being able to personalize the story problems that students are working with so that it makes them feel a connection and then they get to draw on what they know about their friends in the class too.
I feel like we could, we could go on and on about that, more examples, but...
No, that, that's super helpful because again, just to condense, the core, the instruction in math and science was absolutely apparent in all of the examples and the added relevance and accessibility of the instruction is what we need to be doing. So, thank you, that was great.
So we wanted to save some time to engage in activity.
Yes, so I will explain, you can go to the next slide. So part of this, a, a big foundation of this work is not doing this work for students, but doing it with students. And so while we can't have all of these students at the table right now, we wanted to symbolically bring their voice to this table this evening. And so these are index cards that our ethnic studies high school pilot course students got to write on and they reflected on the three questions on the screen. So what are you learning about yourself and/or others? What does ethnic studies make you think and what does ethnic studies make you feel? And we had them reflect on those questions and then jot them down on note cards anonymously. So we wanted to give you the opportunity to read through some of them. And then I typed out a little reflection sheet for you all too, just to get you to be thinking about taking notes on what are students saying, like what do you hear them saying? What patterns do you see emerging in the student feedback? And then what do you wonder? And this is, this work goes beyond just this moment in time. It is to help generate that feedback loop with students so that they can be reflective of their experiences in the pilot course and then we can be responsive to that feedback and any shifts that we need to make along the way and shifts that teachers can make along the way too. So I think just maybe take a handful and then pass them around. And then after that, we'll have CJ talk and be reflective of these three questions himself too, then we can have discussion around the questions here. Then we can have discussion around the questions here. I'd love for you to have time to read all of the cards. But I know in your small piles, too, you found a lot of insightful and brilliant responses from our student scholars. So, just wanted to have a little bit of dialogue. But before we do that, we want to hear from CJ, who is our brilliant scholar, who is with us physically in this space today and at this table. So, I'd like to turn the mic to you so that you could reflect on your own experiences so far.
Excuse me. So far, I think studies, like, it's been very eye-opening, in a sense. About like, myself personally, like, we have right now a project we're doing, like, asking like someone in our family about like, how like we got here, like, either like their immigration story or like our culture, like. And just like, it's been like, because I never really thought about that. And a lot of other students that I've talked to in the class haven't really thought about like, how we really are in this space. And like, it's really just been like, interesting to get to know myself and others. And the class is really like, consisted of like, students and their own identities, the history of like, our culture and like others' cultures, and different views and narratives on history. And it's been very interesting and enlightening and awkward at points. But like, they're discussions that I feel that we need to have as like students, as we're growing up, like, just like, conversations that everyone should have, no matter how uncomfortable they might be. And it's just like, it's very heartwarming, in a sense. Because when I was in like, eighth grade, my sister, she like, taught me a lot of things, told me a lot of things that I'm learning now in school about like, how like, things aren't always like, necessarily like, equal to everyone. And like, I'm not really sure what a word is. But like, she talked to me a lot about like, history and not just like, the like, common history that like, everyone's like, taught, like. The like, yeah. It's like, she talked to me about like, the real like, history of things, how like, like the violence and how everything's not always portrayed, how it, how it really is. And I like how in Ethnic Studies, like, we're given like, it's not really biased to anyone. And they're giving us the truth of what happens and how it impacted people and how it impacted everyone differently and how it impacts communities still today. And I like that, when my sister told me this, like, it's the same exact thing that my teachers and people that like, who impact me today are teaching me as well. And it's kind of nice, like, having that like, backup, like, knowing that like, other people view these things the same way I view these things. And just nice having a space like that. Like, right in the morning, like, I can just sit there and like, really like, be in touch with people and feel like, in a safe space, just being able to communicate with people about my own truth and their own truth and not having it be like, a judgment, a judgment zone. And I feel like if students had that, like, when I needed that most, it would have been very like, interesting to see how that played out. The class, like, so far, like, it's made me feel like, very, very good. Like, just being able to like, really talk, really talk to people about how I feel, how they feel. Not even like, it doesn't really have to be like, school-related because we don't really have like, a set curriculum. Like, it's always like, like however, like, the class is going, like, if we feel like this is like, good, like, we talk about these things. We talk about like, our teacher tells, gives us something and we talk about it. And I like how it's not like, necessarily set. Because like, other classes, like, it's stressful. Like, it's not necessarily like, something you want to do in other classes. It's like, you're here to like, learn about your heritage, your culture, your community. I feel like that's a necessary thing. Because like, it gives like, school is usually like, a stressful place for most, for most kids, like, growing up. And I feel like, a safe space in school is necessary. Because I know a lot of kids don't necessarily feel safe in school. So, I feel like, it's very nice having a place where like, everyone, mostly everyone at least, to my experience, feels like, comfortable and safe. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, going off of that, just want to open it up to all of you to just share your thoughts and reflections after hearing from CJ and from the students' voices on the index cards.
So, I'll start off and share that I really liked the experience of reading the student voice and having CJ, thank you for coming here today. I mean, this is really a great way to really connect with what's happening in the classroom. So, I pulled a lot of neat kind of themes, you know, from the cards that I read. And one of them I'll share is, is that somebody said, "I'm learning that everyone is different, just like me." And I thought that was kind of a fun way to kind of think about it. But again, people, just as CJ said, saying how needed this learning is and have this space for this kind of learning. And that people saying that this is their favorite class, you know? And they feel like it's so valuable to be having these conversations at this stage of their education. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I'll go next. And, yeah, thanks so much, CJ. Like, it's, these, and these are wonderful. But being able to hear from you directly and respond to our thoughts and questions is just, it's just wonderful. And, you know, I picked up some themes as well. You know, I loved, I saw eye-opening and empowerment over and over again and perspective and empathy. And, you know, what I started thinking about was when we did the strategic planning process six years ago and we had student representatives part of that process. And they kept asking us again and again, "I want, I want my learning to be relevant, to feel relevant." Right? And I feel like this is such a great addition, again, to our system to help bring relevance and on a very personal level to our students. Because that's our, our hope and our wish is that, yeah, you know, biology, eh, kind of got to do it. But at the same time, we want all the learning to be relevant, right? And to equip as well to be a global citizen. And I'm, I also, and I, this isn't, I'm still playing in my brain with, you know, the, talk about a quilt, like weaving together culturally sustaining places with helping students learn to be culturally proficient, right? And how, how that intertwines. And it's, it's something I'm enjoying thinking, thinking about. So, thank you. Thank you for bringing these.
Thank you.
I'll just, yeah, just first of all, thank you all for being here. CJ, especially you, thanks for sharing. But thank you all for this work and to providing a, kind of a palette of where you're coming from. And I appreciate that you're coming in from a perspective, I wouldn't expect anything different, but as, from perspective of a whole person, a whole child, rather than just, you know, "We're going to teach you this history, we're going to talk about these things." I mean, yeah, the groundwork that you're putting together is beautiful, really. On the cards, I mean, a few things here. Just, you know, the student said, "I enjoy worrying, learning about my classmates, differences, learning about differences, backgrounds and religions, hurdles and oppression." But the theme that probably came up most was about empathy and safety. About personal safety, about being able to share about myself. But then the kids also said, "I feel safer because other kids are being, are sharing," right? It's kind of, it's just like, when everybody lets their guards down, then everybody can kind of relax. And then that's how you get to know people. So, yeah, just, they felt more included and felt more safe, appreciated learning more about my fellow students, that kind of thing. Which is really neat, which goes back to what, kind of CJ, what you were saying earlier about, if this, and you too, about if the work starts earlier, I mean, what kind of a classroom or world would we be in, right? How many more friends would you have in high school? If you, if kids opened up more in middle school or later, elementary school? When you understood, you know, your classmates, more of your classmates from a real personal level? How much better would the school environment be as you move forward? So, you can see that linkage. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Two of them still processing. But I do, I want to thank you, CJ. I know this was a risk, coming and talking to five strength adults about this experience. It's a very personal experience. So, really appreciate you willing to do that. Yeah, so I'll just kind of build. I was really struck, particularly CJ, when you talked about the rest of school was stressful, but this class wasn't. And yet, you talked about the learning that's happening, the rigor in this environment. So, it's not, not stressful because it's easy, right? And so, what's happening there? That that class with that learning and rigor in it isn't stressful, yet the rest of school is? And it, to me, it sounds like there's a tie-in to the mental health work that we're clamoring for with this, that that, that this is all interconnected. And that's all the farther my brain has gotten with that so far, so.
I was actually just talking to one of my classmates about this, about how we feel about like, mental health in school. And like, how like, in school, like, mental health is always like, mental and physical health is like, praise. Like, take care of like, yourself mentally and physically before you come to school. But then like, it's kind of contradicted by like, when you come to school, like, there's all these deadlines you have to meet, like, all this homework you like, you have to get caught up on before like, the end of semester. And like, most kids, like, they don't have time for all of that. Like, it's very, a stressful situation. Like, especially like, me, like a senior, like, and other kids like, like me. Like, I have like, sports I have to do, like, I, I need to sleep, like. Yeah, like, there's just a lot of like, and like, full ID kids also, like, they have like, a lot of homework to do. And like, if you miss one day, like, it's really bad for you, like. And like, they say like, mental health is so important. And then like, when something happens, like, if you don't feel comfortable sharing that with like, a teacher, like, an adult who's like, giving you this work, it's like, it's like you, it doesn't really feel like your mental health is being like, held to like, the regard that you feel it should be. So, like, I like Ethnic Studies because there's no really like, there's no deadline to this work. Like, it's in class. Like, if you feel comfortable talking, then you talk. But if you don't feel comfortable talking, then you don't have to talk. I like that, that it gives you that option. Because like, you're not put under any pressure at all. And it's just like, it's a safe environment for every single student who's in there. And I feel like a lot of classes don't have that same environment or that same feel. Because every class like, requires like, participation, like, you have to turn this in, you have to do this, you have to do that. And Ethnic Studies is like, it's kind of like, I wouldn't necessarily say like, a family, but like, it's like, because like, I've only been there for a month. I don't know some of my classmates' names. But like, it's like, it's like, very like, it feels like, it feels like it's kind of a family. Because like, we're all like, in touch with each other somehow. And like, that's what we're learning about, that we're all like, connected somehow. Like, we're all like, in this community together. We're not like, connected by blood or like, by like, heritage. But like, we're in this school community together. And I feel like that's what Ethnic Studies is like, praising and holding to a high regard that we're all like, in this together. And I feel like that's what held to the highest regard in Ethnic Studies. And that's why I like the class so much personally and other classmates that I've talked to. Because they hold like, I feel like that is the one class that I'm in that truly like, cares for like, my health, like, my teacher, too. Like, he cares for my health. Like, I've talked to him, like, I'm willing to like, vent to my teacher if I need to. And I appreciate that a lot. Because like, most teachers, like, they don't take that time to like, really like, care for their students, like. But like, it's nice having like, a community of people who are really willing to care for you. And like, you know that.
I really want to thank you for being here and sharing that perspective. And again, as I read through the cards, I saw many of the same themes, the belonging, the sense of belonging, empathy, awareness, self-awareness, community building, safety. But it also made me think about our strategic plan, specifically goal two, which we want to have responsible, resilient, empathetic learners. And this is the answer to that question or that charge by the school board to North Shore School District as a whole. That's the work. This is how we get there. At least one of the key ways that we can actually move in that direction and improve upon all the measures that are associated with this particular goal. So, I really appreciate the work because it's, it is called for and. Um, so I really appreciate the work, because it's, it is called for and expected by our board and the community as a whole.
I just had a thought too, about how this work can maybe help improve multiple aspects of things. We talked about student belonging and, and safety, but also one of the things we're focused on is harassment, intimidation and bullying in our schools. And how do we help students minimize that kind of behavior towards one another? And it just makes me wonder that if students get to know one another more, that that would take that down an additional level, which would also make our schools a safer, healthier place.
That was one of the reasons.
That was one of the reasons why when we talked about whether it should be a 12th grade class or 11th and 12th, because there's historical components that they would know by then. Um, based on what they're taught in the classroom, that, that there was a desire to open it up to ninth and 10th graders as well, because of the foundation it could set. Um, for the way in which they navigate high school, as well as not dismissing the fact that students are coming to us with lived experiences that are helping them teach us.
If I could tag, this is more a request going forward, because we don't, we can let you go home, like we'll, we'll talk about this all night. But I'm wondering now, based off your feedback CJ, you know, we have Innovation Lab High School that is approaching learning from more from a, um, like a holistic approach as a whole community. Mastery-based learning, it's called, where you don't necessarily check a bunch of boxes, you prove that you've learned in a, in a way that you get, has some agency over choosing how to prove it. And so the link they're in, it would be something I would appreciate, you know, in terms of the pedagogical approach of this program, you know, what we might be learning over here. Because if it does have the added benefits of, of building our capacity to reduce stress on our students. And, um, you know, i- if we can continue to build on it, if this is kind of a mastery-based approach, I might be guessing, but I've just noticed those commonalities that, you know, just the way you talked about the stress being lower for you, CJ, because this is something we really want throughout all our classes. And so if we can learn, that would be great.
Um, and I have a wondering that's, I know, I'm sorry, we are super passionate and excited about this. So, um, but I, one of my, my wonderings was what the responses would have been like if this was a required class? Because students that are choosing to take it are walking into it with an open mind of doing the work, right? And so would we see the same positive, um, self-awareness and excitement for it if they had to take the class? And does that change that trajectory? And I'm not expecting an answer, it's just something I was pondering of, would, would we have the same success rate if it was, they had required, they were required to take it? Because that does change, even if it is the right work and maybe even something we agree with, but if we have to be there, it tends to change our mentality.
I don't quite think it would be like, like the same response, because like obviously it would be a required class, so students would think about it like differently. But like, uh, I feel that over time, students who are required to take that class would open up to it in a sense, like I feel that it's necessary. Because I feel like students who like, who are required to take any class don't necessarily want to be in the class, because it's required, but like eventually like you have to like open up to the class, because like you want to pass the class. Like if ethnic studies is required, then like they'll understand that like they have to pass the class and like they need to like understand the concepts that are being, that are being applied in the class. So they'll eventually like come to terms with the community building in the class and be able to participate. And I feel like overall, those students who don't necessarily want to be in the class will have like, it'll like. They'll have a good outcome overall for all students like in the class necessarily, like I feel like it'll like apply to everyone in a good sense.
I will say that it's promising that we had enrollment go up for second semester, because that tells me that students are, based on our index cards, having positive experiences across demographics. And then going to share those experiences with their peers. And then because the, the numbers are growing, to me, that signals that students are encouraging their peers to enroll. So I think that with the rollout of the pilot, I like how we're doing it, because I think that it's naturally sparking interest and curiosity and what's that about? And some of the students on the cards were like, well, we weren't fully sure what it was about, but I really like it now. So I, I'm optimistic and I think that aligns with what CJ was saying.
Maybe just a quick thought too, just about the process. So if we have high school teachers that are going to teach ethnic studies, maybe it expands to middle school and we get some teachers that teach at middle school. It makes me wonder how as a district and a system, we support the elementary school teachers, the other middle school teachers that aren't teaching ethnic studies and in the framework. And then the other high school teachers that are teaching other subjects other than ethnic studies. And how do we support an already busy staff with a lot of responsibility to welcome this work and take it on with good fidelity and get great outcomes? Because I think once people are involved in it, you know, like CJ's attesting to, you know, some people here saying it's their favorite class, you know, there's a lot of greatness that can happen out of these conversations. But how do we make, I don't want to say make space, but how do we support teachers, because they're very busy and that's a lot of staff that aren't doing this as a course?
Yeah, I mean, I think there's even been a shift in our professional development approach to leadership. And it doesn't feel like racial and educational justice is the side dish, but it's the main dish, it's the plate, it's the lens that you're looking through your leadership. And so for ethnic studies, as we're building out this movement, I think more and more, we're going to see, and as we equip teachers too, it doesn't feel like it's one more thing over here, but it's how we do teaching and learning. And I think that making that shift in the system can then help engrain those supports along the way for the resources, the time allocated to professional learning, the supports that we provide.
Thank you.
Absolutely, and just, um, I think in working with many of the members on the team and extending into their departments, and so teachers are then sharing the work within their departments. And I believe there are teachers out there who, who, who are articulating that they want to know that they're on the right track, they're, they're on the ground with their students, listening to them and trying to be responsive to them in the, in the moment. And so the, 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 the framework itself then provides a, a layer of support and frankly, protection for some who are trying to provide students with what, with what they need. Um, in a way that's going to keep them engaged in, in rigorous, right, and culturally relevant learning experiences, but in also in a way that sustains their person in that space and class. And so there, that many are excited about the opportunity to have something that's common across schools that can support this work that they're, that they're trying to do. So, thank you.
All right, well, I would like to thank CJ again for coming and spending your evening after school and practice with us. Thank you very much, it means a lot. And then like to thank Ava Thomas and Melissa Riley as well. And this was a great conversation, we look forward to updates later. And at this point, we'll call the study session adjourned. Thank you.
Ava, how much of this do you want, need back? Do we get to keep the cars?
We want the cars back.